Good evening. And welcome to our Planning Commission hearing this evening. Excuse me. I would like to sort of meeting to order. First, are there any public comments or items not listed on the agenda that anyone would like to speak on? Seeing none at this point, we'll move forward. We have no minutes this evening, so we'll pass by that and go directly into our hearing. Hearings. First one is TP 06-04 subdivision and VR dash, uh VR 06-05 of variance. At this time, I will read my information for you all. Staff report has been prepared for the application and has been made available seven days prior to this evening's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report along with any written comments input that has been received through the public notification process for the application. The quasi judicial hearing procedure the commission will follow is set out in state law in the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart to my left. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a slip into the planning staff before the hearing or before you speak. All letters, reports are picked, marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they can be submitted into the record. For the public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name and city of residence. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit materials of any length while the public rec is open on each application. However, any party wishing for a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements of or evidence so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be judged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, O'Reilly Statute 197-796 requires us to announce the following. Failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Do any commissioners any ex-party contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or other statements to declare? This point now? All right. And the procedures tonight will begin with the staff report and any additional correspondence.
Thank you, Chair Powell. First public hearing tonight is TP 06-04 and variance 06-05. This is a thirteen lot subdivision with a request for approval of variance of the maximum cul-de-sac length of three hundred and fifty feet. Applicant is Icon Construction, 1980 Southwest Willamette Falls Drive, Suite 200, West Lynn, Oregon 97068. And the applicant's representative is SFA Design Group of ninety, 9020 Washington Square Drive, Suite 350 Portland, Oregon 97223. The sub parcels are three parcels of land located and identified as 19052 Pease Road, 19048 Pease Road, and 19038 Pease Road respectively identified on the Clackamas County Tax map 32E7A, tax lots sixteen hundred, sixteen oh one, and ninety-two hundred. Applicants requesting approval of a thirteen lot subdivision on three point zero eight acres owned R8 single family identified as the Pease Dallas subdivision located on the south side of Pease Road at the edge of Dallas Street. Additionally, the applicant is requesting approval of a variance to the maximum permitted cul-de-sac length of three hundred and fifty feet. Site slopes to the north. Site is not identified as being located in any water resource overlay zone. And the applicant provided a narrative geotechnical report, traffic analysis letter, and storm warning report which are included as exhibits to the staff report. There are three existing houses on site which will remain as part of the subdivision. And the applicant has proposed to remove several trees and part of a row of large evergreen trees on the south side of the property. These trees I'm going to discuss a little bit later briefly. The applicant is going to propose to create a cul-de-sac street with a pedestrian access width leading from the cul-de-sac to Pease Road known as tract A on the plans. I'll briefly describe the variance in more detail. The city's subdivision code requires that cul-de-sacs be no more than three hundred and fifty feet in order to accommodate a fire access. The applicant's proposed a cul-de-sac that would be measured from the center line of existing Roman Court and it would be approximately three hundred and eighty feet which exceeds our standard by thirty feet. Applicants are permitted to provide cul-de-sacs when there are certain situations preclude providing a through street. In this case, existing development pattern around the parcels of land which the applicant wants to develop houses on them and it is not feasible or practicable for the applicant to provide a through street. So in this case, they're doing a cul-de-sac. And just as a note, Clackamas County Fire District has given preliminary approval to their cul-de-sac design. If the variance is approved to permit the additional length, the applicant would provide final design and construction plans to the engineering department to review. Surrounding zoning on the site, site itself is R8 and it's rounded immediately budding properties are all R8 which is the single-family dwelling district allows lots of eight thousand square feet as a minimum. Across the street on the northeast road, there are some R10 and R6 single-family dwelling districts. This map also shows the current extent of that street as it subs out to the parcel in question. The existing cul-de-sac on Roman Court is where we measure the cul-de-sac length from. I don't have a slide of the actual proposed development, but I have a hard copy of the plot here if you need to refer. This is an aerial photo of site as of spring, actually, yeah, two thousand and five. The shadows on that site indicate the presence of rows of large evergreen trees. They're, I think, Douglas firs. And part of the development plan, removal and preservation plan, the applicant's proposing to move apart, actually proposing to remove the row, the two parallel rows of trees on the north side of that property. The north row of trees would be removed subject to the need to develop a single-family lot and subdivision allows an applicant to remove trees in a building envelope outside of setbacks. The southern row of trees that you see there is, falls within the proposed tract A which is the strip of land that would be designated as a pedestrian access way would lead from cul-de-sac out to Pease Road to the northwest there. Comments regarding the subdivision received to date included city staff comments which have been incorporated into the staff report. Although the city's transportation consultant, Dave Evans and Associates, reviewed the transportation analysis letter for the subdivision and had no concerns with the traffic study itself. Exhibit A in your, on your desks has been submitted by Mr. Don Bunyard who is the adjacent property owner and he will be speaking during the public testimony on the application. Mr. Bunyard's concerns include removal of the, well, the proposed removal of the trees on the single-family lot on the north, so the northern row of trees. He's also concerned about utility extensions into the site and the need for a fence between the subject parcel along the accessway in his property. At this point, staff has recommended an alternative construction and landscape plan for the public accessway in order to preserve the majority of the trees that fall within the accessway. Many of the accessways that you see in new subdivisions right now conform to our landscaping requirements for a paved surface and a fairly low evergreen hedge. Some of them have fences. In this case, in order to preserve those trees, applicant is recommending that the, the staff has recommended the applicant propose an alternative plan in order to minimize grading that could damage those root system with the intent to preserve those trees. They are fairly widely spaced and the proposed trail would fall within the root zones of those trees. However, if there were an alternative plan that allowed a permeable surface for the trail and which was raised or such manner to minimize grading in that area, we thought that that would be acceptable alternative to the plan. I'll talk about the variance now. The requirement in the code with regard to street design for cul-de-sacs states that when permitted, cul-de-sacs shall have a maximum length of three hundred and fifty feet and include pedestrian bicycle accessways as provided section sixteen, sixteen twelve to twenty of this code and chapter twelve twenty-four which is the design standards and requirements for pedestrian and public accessway. The section is not intended to preclude the use of a curd delivery, well, this does not apply to this application. He's not proposing a curd linear eyebrow. Staff found that due to existing developments surrounding the subject property, the use of cul-de-sac is appropriate in this case. And the variance criteria are up here on the screen. The applicant has met all of them. The variance is the minimum that would alleviate the hardship. They are mitigating the impact of the, of the cul-de-sac through provision of the pedestrian accessway. It is only thirty feet longer than the standard. And applicant did not identify a practical alternative and staff curves with. And the variance does conform to the comprehensive plan with regard to developing infill lots and providing housing. All of the other criteria with regard to the subdivision have either been met or can be met through the conditions approval in the code. And staff is recommending approval of the variance in the subdivision.
Okay, thanks Pete. Any questions?
Pete, could you explain, it says the city discourages the use of cul-de-sacs in permanent dead end streets. What, for what reasons?
Reasons for, in many cases in the city, we have cul-de-sacs where there really ought to be a connection. The idea is to improve traffic flow and provide connectivity for pedestrians and cars. And this helps to improve the streetscape as well as to minimize impact on individual roads. Essentially, what the city is trying to create through adherence to our street standards and our street design standards is the formation of a grid type of system that also allows for development of two tiers of lots in most cases. In many cases, we have photography that concerns the use of that standard and also oddly shaped parcels of land, but to the maximum extent we can.
Essentially, we would like through streets, especially for safety and bar. Is that correct?
Yes.
I've got a question. What's the, what's the criteria for putting that public accessway? I mean, is there, what's the reason that we're putting that in there?
The public accessway section of the code is not within the zoning and subdivision regulations. It's in, in chapter twelve. And I may ask for Tony's help on this, but primarily the idea is so that if a parcel is landlocked due to the creation of a cul-de-sac, there is a way for pedestrians and bicyclists who exit out of that cul-de-sac without having to go out of their way and, you know, go the long way around essentially. And so can make it out to a minor arterial or a collector road without having to go all the way out of the cul-de-sac.
But I don't see, on a lot of these other ones, unless I just don't see them. There are, there are a lot of those that are reasonably landlocked around it. It doesn't appear that we have any pedestrian accessways that I can see.
Yeah. This is new code, I believe, right? Two thousand and four.
Well, I'd have to go back and look to see exactly when that ordinance was put in as to the pedestrian connections. We do get them whenever we do put in a cul-de-sac since I've been here.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea. I just, I, the ones that we have had, there have been some problems with security and, and issues around that. And I guess when I looked at the site, it was hard for me to picture that. I mean, I kind of saw the trees and kind of pictured how that would be. But I'm, I'm concerned about that. We can talk about that later, just with the trees and, and I'm concerned a little bit about security there. But curious about what the, what the code said. I couldn't find it, so I didn't see it. Any other questions? Okay. Well, at this time then, we will open up to the applicant. If you'll introduce yourself.
My name is Matt Sprague with, is this on? Are we getting him? SFA Design Group, nine zero two zero Southwest Washington Square Drive, Portland, Oregon 97223. Thank you for your time tonight, man. Pretty straightforward subdivisions, thirteen lots, keeping three, the three existing homes. So we'll have ten new home there. We do have a cul-de-sac which to reduce vehicle miles traveled, the city likes to create connectivity for vehicles, but if we had a place to, we certainly would. But we just don't have that opportunity. We exceed, exceed the standard of the cul-de-sac length by about thirty feet. The one instance we needed to go that far is because if we pulled the cul-de-sac back any further, lot one would be severely impacted in terms of a building envelope. And then lots two, three, and four would just be stretched out extremely long and with very small street frontages. So we picked a very appropriate place to terminate the cul-de-sac and, and ran it by the fire department initially before we made application to make sure we were okay with them. I really don't have a lot to say or present on the project itself because it is a pretty standard subdivision other than the variance. There are a couple of items that I did want to chat about, however, condition number seventeen. And I don't think, or Pete and I talked about this briefly, but there is a sentence in there that I think staff will re-ought to be removed. And this is on page eighteen of nineteen. And it is the third line down, very end of that line where it starts with "in." In addition, the applicant has identified several trees along the property lines of proposed lots five, six, and seven that are preservable. However, a tree protection fence is not proposed around the trees and the grading appears to indicate that the trees may be severely impacted. I think this is part of a leftover condition approval from another project because the backs of lot five, six, and seven on this project, there's no grading, there is tree protecting, and we are saving those. So if we wanted to strike that portion of the condition approval, I think that'd be Condition number eighteen regarding the alternative landscape and construction plan for the pedestrian bicycle accessway and preserving those trees along that boundary, that is not a problem for us. I just want to make sure that we do have flexibility because it's our feeling that those trees are relatively tight and close together and maybe would be appropriate to thin to a degree along that boundary for the future health of the trees. And so if we have some flexibility with the arborist recommendations, that might be very helpful. Otherwise, all the conditions are just fine. And do you have anything you'd like to add, Mark?
No, I'm Mark Andrews with Icon Construction. And I think Matt spelled it out well. It's pretty straightforward and leaving those trees along there is fine. They're, they're very tight, but, and it may cause a little bit of a tunnel effect through there, but we don't have a problem leaving it.
Okay. So otherwise, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, Matt, I'm trying to lead up to, you know, if we want a through street, why, I think, I know why, but why didn't you run, propose a road through the peas?
We didn't propose a road through the peas because in our discussions with the city engineering department, we would be creating an offset intersection and inappropriate spacing for the street across, across the way which would create traffic problems.
Thank you.
On the three houses that are remaining, it looks like, and tell me if I'm wrong, that lot five, one of the remaining houses will have access on to the new cul-de-sac?
Correct.
Then lot twelve, thirteen will not have access, they'll be access peas?
Right. They'll maintain their individuals.
Okay, so there's no, okay, good.
Oh, you know, one other thing that I wanted to bring up is Mark was just talking about Pease Road itself and the sidewalk along Pease Road. And maybe this is a question for, but will we have the flexibility at looking to move the sidewalk curb tight in that section because we believe we can save some, a better tree right along the roadway?
I think we're all right with that, aren't we?
Along Pease Road itself, currently proposing a curb and a landscape strip and then the sidewalk. If we had the ability to at least explore the option of moving the sidewalk curb tight instead of having the landscape strip, we might be able to save some of the larger trees that ride along the, along Pease Road.
I guess just from staff's point, we usually do work with applicants. If we do have the ability to try and save some trees, we will let sidewalk around whether it be easement on the property on our site or remove a curb height in order to get around some trees to save them. So I think we have historically used that, offered that flexibility.
Okay.
As long as, you know, we get an arborist to sign off on it, that it could possibility of survival and whatnot, as long as we can stay away from the roots.
Yeah, those trees keep a good buffer from Pease Road to those existing houses for traffic and, and noise to save as many of those possible benefits, the houses, quite a bit, the existing houses.
Those trees, I don't recall. Are the trees planted in a row or are we going to have to do a meandering sidewalk or something along those?
They're not planted in a row as some of the other trees you see on here. And it may be possible to do a meandering sidewalk, you know, at points where those trees come closer to the curb line. But what they will create, if we can preserve them, is much better streetscape as well maintaining that existing older vegetation.
Yeah, the aerial photo shows those in some detail.
At least the top of them.
Are those trees on the property or could they be created into the, the curb plan or?
I would say the majority of them will be located in the future right of way. Couple of them will be just on the edge of the right of way. So they could be, you know, some of them will be incorporated into plant or whether it's behind the sidewalk or in front of the sidewalk depending on how sidewalk meanders through there, so.
At this point, have, have you talked to an arborist about the, the risk of moving the one row of trees and leaving just one row of trees? Is it going to cause root jock? I mean, are they, are we going to have a lot of heavy loss or a weakness of those other trees that stay because of the, because of the loss of the root stock there?
We have not talked to an arborist about that yet. However, if you're talking about the two parallel strips there, they are substantially, substantial distance apart, probably in the order of about fifty feet. So I think it might be important that an arborist looks at how they are removed. But as, as far as long-term survival of the other trees, to make sure we have a lot of root intertwining, you know, if those trees are removed, you cut the main roots of the, the parallel line of trees towards the top of the project site and take those out if he thinks there might be some intertwining of roots so that you leave some roots in the ground and have a big problem. We'll get a recommendation for that though.
Yeah, that's, I mean, to me, that's important. I know, I know it's right in the middle of your building envelope, but I think it's important that we look at the health of those. If we're going to leave one row of trees, I certainly think it makes sense to make sure that we are going to get a row of trees after all said and done.
Right, exactly. I think that's critical. I don't think that because it's not a grove, I don't think there's going to be any wind potential that results as of, from removing the other row of trees though.
That'll get my next question. Okay, any other questions?
Well, I'll bring it up, maybe a little premature, but, you know, we're talking in the city of density and community density and, and good planning. And obviously, we ended up getting a cul-de-sac with Roman Court. Now we're talking about doing another one. And then I'm looking at lot nineteen oh five six, which, you know, in terms of density, it's some time, in fact, Mr. Bunyard talked or had written about it. I don't know where to go with this, but is there access available sometime or is something that we're not concerned about?
No. If I, if I might interject in front of you, Pete, I'm sorry. I actually just remembered in the conditions of approval, nothing showed up there, but I think it's a great to add a condition of approval because staff has discussed this with us after the application was submitted about the partitionability of that property. It would be appropriate to put in a condition of approval requiring a tract with a tw- well, what would be the minimum flag width for that?
It'd be twenty.
Twenty feet, so a twenty foot wide tract to provide access to that particular tax lot so that when it does partition in the future, I believe it's partitional but not subdivisible in lots, then they would have access to the cul-de-sac. I think that's a very good point that I didn't mean to overlook, but thank you for bringing that up because staff has discussed with us. And we do that immediately adjacent to track and where it connects to the cul-de-sac, taking out part of lot seven. Seven is a substantially large lot. lot.
Okay. Any other questions at this point? No, all right. Any other comments from the applicant? Okay, great. So we will open this up now to the public. And at this time, Tony, I don't have any, do we have anyone interested in supporting this applicant that would like to speak?
Mr. Bunyard?
My name is Don Bunyard. I live at nineteen oh five six, South Pease Road. I am here to support the subdivision. I have nothing against growth in the city. My issue is, is that I own a property right next to the pedestrian access path. It sounds like the city complements, you've addressed one of my concerns, was landlocking the back portion of my property. I have no interest in developing that property, but some you will down the road. So I would just ask that that be taken into consideration in the plan. Because it will be a public access path, I asked the people with the city, how does the code apply? Because I have nothing to do development. I would like a fence on this side of my property. There's nothing in city code that requires that. So that is up to the developer and myself to work out, or I will be forced to bear the burden of that because of the development. I don't think that's really appropriate. But I am willing to work with the developers to come up with a fair and equitable resolution to that situation. I am very concerned about the plans for those two rows of trees that they've been discussing. There are trees that are two foot in diameter, there's trees that are a foot diameter. I believe that if you take out one row of those trees on the north side, that the trees on the south side are dependent on those trees, that other row for protection from the wind. And I believe that they will come down. I've spent enough time in the woods, if you've ever been in the edge of clear cut trying to hunt, you see the effects of what happens when you take out trees that are dependent on one another for protection. If the developer is going to address this issue with an arborist, then that's all I can ask. My opinion is they can take them both down. If, I've spent a lot of time cleaning up branch in my backyard for those trees. There's none on my property, and it does cause a lot of extra work for me. Just so the city's aware, if they do make that public access path with those fir trees there and we get a big wind, city staff will be spending considerable time up there clearing the brush off that path that can be used. I've lived there four years, and two of those four years, Bunyard, they actually had one of the large drop boxes come in, and they hired somebody to, and they spent about a week cleaning up branch through that whole strip of property. Anyway, this is something to consider, the long-term effects of what we're doing here. But whether they stay or go, you know, I really have no control. But if they, you take some out, my house is right next to that path, and I really don't want to have a tree in my living room. I pretty much summarized everything in my statement. Thank you, fun.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Any other?
We do not have any other requests from anyone in the present room tonight?
Okay, and I'll ask if anyone else wants to speak who's here, for or against this application. Then if not, I'll, the applicant back for rebuttal?
Matt Sprague again with SFA Design Group. Yes, access, will provide access to the backyard property. We would only ask that that's a property, that tract would be dedicated to him, but it ought to be used upon development, future development of property. I think maybe, maybe city staff have an opinion on that, but upon future development of his property, then that becomes a necessity for the rear lot.
Yeah, we, it would be the best idea to transfer it to him.
Upon?
A non-vehicle access strip on it, no further development.
We can work it out either for a, a transfer or an easement and have a non-vehicular access strip. And, you know, there are ways to ensure that it remains available but not used until that development occurs. Sure, the question is how to, how to make that transfer of access usable in the future, but at the same time make sure it doesn't become an accessway before it's needed. And the idea is to transfer it in some way, but have a non-vehicular access strip so that it doesn't become a backdoor into your property. It may not be for you, but it may be for future owner.
I'm sorry, hold on. We need to make sure we have everything on the record. You can't just have conversations going on in the gallery. So someone would like to?
And regarding the trees, I think, I'm not sure what to do here, because it kind of sounds like you'd like to have them removed. If that's the case, we could remove them all and put a fence in along that entire property boundary. I'm not sure exactly. He was talking about having to work quite a bit with, with the picking up limbs, et cetera. I'm not substantially worried whatsoever about the health of those trees by removing the other, because of the distance between them and because they are not growing in a grove. I think that if you look at individual rows by themselves, if you removed a swath within each individual row and left one tree and another swath, then you might have some wind throw issues. But our winds here typically stronger, winds are from southwest where are winter storms. And we're removing the northerly, northeasternly trees, so we don't expect there to be a drastic change on impact for wind throw for the southerly, southerly trees. So we're not sure where to go with the tree issue along that property alone without possibly maybe some further input from the property owner and the city.
Well, Tony?
You know, we try and preserve as many trees as we can, as long as it's done in a safe manner. I think that the condition is written in such a way that if the arborist finds that they are hazardous, they could be removed. When we, our pedestrian standards, our pedestrian walkway standards utilize landscaping as the buffer. We don't put in fences along the, on the track for the pedestrian walkway. Doesn't mean that the property owner adjacent to it couldn't have a fence put up along his property line, or the home couldn't have a fence either. But the pedestrian accessway itself, which is a tract, is in a right-of-way dedicated to the city. We have certain design standards which don't include fencing. So I guess it's probably going to come down to the discretion of the commission as to what they would like to see with, with that row of trees based on the monian options that have been put forward tonight. Staff tried to, tries to preserve trees whenever possible. That's one of the reasons we made that recommendation, but we did include the out if the arborist finds that it isn't.
Right, and that's, that's, you know, my concern too, is I don't want to lose trees, like whenever possible. And unless it's physically impossible, or unless it's going to cause fu- future damage, I don't know trees that well that I can answer that question. So we have to leave it up to the arborists. As for the fence, you know, I, I think that's something that can be worked out between the developer and the, and the customer, or the developer and the property owner. Something that's fair and equitable. Certainly, I can't, I won't make it a, not up to me, it's up these guys too, but I don't want to make it a part of the application. But I do think it's something that when we're developing a private or a public accessway, I think that we have to look people's, we expect their privacy, in some ways. And maybe the trees will do it, maybe the trees won't do it. So it's hard to know where to head with that at this point, but we can discuss that when we back to the commission.
Mark Andrews again with, I would be willing to, if an arborist says that these trees need to be removed because of wind issues or anything else, is to put a fence in at that point, at our cost, along that row. If it becomes a necessity based on some arborist report, either by the homeowner next door or by our arborist, if it becomes something that is a hazard or an issue, we could do that. That could be part of the conditions. If during, during any time prior to construction, that option can be available.
Well, since I've got you up here, and you, and you feel like you're in a good mood. No, the other question I had, and maybe you can answer, is I, how long, how long is that path expected to be? I don't have that in front of me.
It's approximately two hundred and one feet.
Okay, two hundred feet. And I, and I'm, I am a little concerned with a fence, if there were a fence there, about the risk of safety, of walking in at night. And, exactly. And I don't think, Tony can answer, or Pete, whether we have, there's anything about lighting that we discussed on that pedestrian walkway?
Yes, there is minimum lighting standard requirement along that pedestrian walkway.
There is.
I think it's a point five minimum or average. Actually, just put it away, but it's about a point five foot cant.
Okay, all right, good. I just want to make sure that we had some, some lighting built into that project. So, we're all singing the same song here.
I think so.
Okay. All right, I just want to kind of get your sense too of that, and the fence and the trees. So I appreciate your comments on that.
Okay, so basically, I think we're pointing to the arborist to make recommendations, is what I'm hearing from everybody. He's trying to figure out the same thing, work in the same direction, so that's good.
Well, right, and the arborist, whether, and yes, here's my other, since we're talking about it, my other question or concern would be if the arborist comes back and says, well, their, their trees are going to be fine, they need to be culled, and we need to pull thirty percent of them out. At that point, then all of a sudden, we have the privacy issue again. And at that point, then I think maybe it might be, we could discuss with the property owner whether you want to do a fifty percent deal on the fence, or some kind of?
We don't have any problem putting a fence there under any condition. We typically do around a lot of subdivisions anyway, so that's, it's sometimes better if we just put it in on our property line and do a good neighbor towards the neighbor side. It just works out easier that way, of course.
Okay, I like that answer. Okay, any other questions, the applicant? Anything? Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Comments?
I think staff is kind of talking through, there's a lot of things that were discussed, and whether we can put conditions together that sort of meet their needs tonight, or whether we'd have to bring it back to you. And to the extent we want to do it tonight, I imagine they want to review it and a chance to look at it. And, you know, I don't know if we can do it or not. I assume you probably want your approval sooner or later. So, you know, to the extent, you, you want to make a decision and give staff's guidance, we might be able to put some language together here, or maybe take a short five, ten-minute recess to, to work out the conditions, you know, whatever the tenant wants to do.
All right, I'll pass that on to, we'll talk, talk about that up here. So, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point, no other comments. And we will come up to the commission for discussion. Gentlemen?
It seems to me like we've got either scenario laid out that's agreeable to both parties, that we lay conditions into, whether it's putting it into the conditions of this, this or not. My staff can come up with that language. I don't think it'd be a problem getting it through tonight.
Any other?
Is one of the issues that we're thinking about, the, the access for cul-de-sac to the property, is that, that is, is that something that can reasonably, reasonably be dealt with in a ten-minute recess?
Yeah, you know, the issues I heard were, one, the access. I don't know where the commission is going on that. It seems like it's something that, that you might be interested in. The second one is fence or no fence and arborist, and sort of how to deal with the trees, I would think a condition along the lines of follow the arborist's recommendation and possibly a fence is sort of what I heard from the applicant. And I'm trying to think other issues.
It was the grading issue, I think, that was mentioned, relative to item seventeen.
Yes, the, the striking language on seventeen.
Steph has no problem with that, it wasn't error.
Okay.
Are there any other issues?
No, I think that was it. Engineering staff and planning staff had discussed the ability to modify condition eighteen to include some provision for the arborist's discretion if it turns out that those trees could be a hazard. It wouldn't take much to modify that or a sentence to that effect. Also. Right, and also to modify condition twelve to allow a curb tight sidewalk in order to save those trees along Pease Road, which was discussed earlier.
Right, no other issues? Okay, I, I think we probably try and take care of this tonight. I think there's some issues, I'd like to hear what they are before we move forward on this. So if we could take a five, ten-minute break here and work on that language, and then bring it back up here, and then we'll move forward.
Certainly.
Thank you. We'll take just a couple-minute break here. It appears that we crafted some language. And at this point, let's hear that.
Okay, I think we'll go in order of the conditions, maybe Bob.
Number twelve, number twelve concerns saving trees on Pease Road. So we're going to add at the end of the paragraph on number twelve, applicant may propose using alternative sidewalk location, save existing trees such as curb tight or other design as approved by the engineer vision.
Okay.
Okay. Condition seventeen, we eliminate the third sentence that begins, in addition, the applicant has identified some trees going through, indicate that the trees may be severely impacted. That was a remnant from a previous staff report. Condition eighteen, we would propose no changes. Essentially, what this involves, the trees along the strip, what it says now is that the trees will be protected, but through a tree protection plan that will be prepared by consulting arborist. And essentially, if the arborist says, that's what happens. And leave it in the hands of the people who know. We would add an additional new condition, number twenty-six, that would read as follows, applicant shall provide a minimum twenty-foot wide access strip for the future development of tax lot nineteen oh five six through proposed tax lot seven by easement or other means acceptable to the city. The access strip should prevent the use of the access strip for vehicular traffic through the use of a non-vehicular access, access strip or such other measures as are acceptable to the city. The non-access strip shall remain until tax lot nineteen oh five six developed. The idea is, we think we found a way that, that works, but we want to retain flexibility because as we kind of talk through things, there's a little complexity about how ownership passes, invasion of tracks, and lots, and, and other things. So what we want to do is make sure that there is access retained, and the details are, are done in a way where you have a little more time to think that this is the first, but then we have time to work it through. The only other issue was the fence, and it sounds like they had been discussing the fence, and we didn't have a condition for it. And, and we thought the best option maybe to let the developer and the neighbor work out how that fence is going to work, instead of the, the city sort of becoming, getting into the middle of it.
Okay. Did that address everything that you? Did that address everything that you all had concerns about? Okay, excellent, well. Any other comments before we move forward? Well, I just wanted to say thanks, it was, I appreciate you guys working together with the, uh, the applicant and the, the other property owners. I, it's a nice way to be neighbors and work this through. Um, I'll, I'll also say I, I hate cul-de-sacs, but I also see, I'll see in this, in this particular application, we've done it to ours once, yet once again. And I'm sure there'll be more as we, as we progress these, these lots, they are left, unfortunately, that's all we can do in some cases. Um, I think it's a good design, I think it's an intelligent design and I appreciate, you know, the way that you've allowed those lots to at least have some reasonable size to them. And, uh, so you can, so you can meet that and I'm, I'm open to that. So. Do I have a motion?
I move to pass as opposed.
Okay, and that is on TP zero six zero four and VR zero six zero five.
As amended.
As amended, do you have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, Tony, what'd you call?
Commissioner Stein. Commissioner Dunn.
Aye.
Commissioner Gruner.
Aye.
Sheriff Person Paul.
Aye.
Well, I should carry four zero, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, folks, appreciate it.
We can just take a, literally a two minute, I'll get set up.
Yes.
We'll break down.
You certainly can, two minutes. Development agreement and, uh, planning SP zero six zero five, site plan and design review, VR zero six zero eight of variance and WR zero six zero eight water resource. And at this time, I will read my legal information. Staff report has been prepared for the application and has been made available seven days prior to this meeting's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in our report along with any written comments and input that has been received through the public notification process for the application. The quasi judicial hearing procedure the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart to my left. Anyone wishing to speak, fill out a slip and give it to the planning staff before the hearing or before you speak. All letters, reports or pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they can be submitted into the record. For the public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name and your, uh, address. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. Believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report. Identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing for a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence so that the city parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged applicable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, Oregon v. statutes one ninety-seven dash seven ninety-six requires us to announce the following. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow local government or a designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damage in circuit court. Do any commissioners have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias or other statements to declare? Seeing none, we will move forward, yes. Okay.
I have been there.
You have been there, okay. The procedures for tonight will begin again with the staff report, that's, uh, Tony Honkle.
Thank you, Sheriff Person Paul. Um, just a clarification that, um, this is, uh, a little unique in that we're coming forward with a development agreement. And what we're looking for tonight is a recommendation from the planning commission to the city commission on whether to approve, approve of the conditions, deny. Um, the city commission meeting, we did advertise it at the same time that we advertised tonight's meeting. Um, and since then, there's been a change of location because they're going to be updating the ecosystem in the chambers here. So the, the hearing will still be on Wednesday, September twentieth, but it will now be at the McLaughlin County Chambers over on Kane Road, a new building there. So just a, a change of venue for the city commission hearing on September twentieth, it'll still be at seven PM. So continuing on, um, this is an existing gas station, uh, located at one zero zero two McLaughlin Boulevard. Uh, do have it up on the overhead, um, it's at the corner of Tenth and McLaughlin, ninety-nine E. Um, it has been an existing, uh, service station including, uh, Gas Islands Convenience Store and service base, um, since I believe the fifties or sixties. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing building and construct a new approximately two thousand six hundred and seventy square foot building. Um, some of the background on this property, uh, recently the city, this used to be zone general coal, which was one of our, um, broader, um, uses. Um, it did allow the use of gas station, service station, convenience store. Um, in two thousand four, the Oregon's code was updated and a new, uh, zoning designation, mixed use downtown was implemented in our downtown district. So the general commercial designation was changed to mixed use downtown. As part of that, service stations were not written in as a permitted use. Uh, the applicant did file a measure thirty-seven claim and did receive approval for, from the city for the service station on this site to continue its use as well as, um, demolish, demolish the use and rebuild it. Um, if he did not receive that measure thirty-seven claim, if the building were demolished or destroyed, it would not have been able to be built under the new zoning, because that's the reason for the measure thirty-seven claim. Uh, they had plans to rebuild, demolish and rebuild on this, on this site as a gas station. And when that change occurred, it limited their options until they filed the measure thirty-seven claim. Um, one of the limitations on the site are where the existing storage tanks are located underground. They're located, um, at near the intersection Tenth and ninety-nine E, which limits where the building can be located on the site. Um, it also dictates where the, where the pumps need to go. Uh, it would be a great cost to relocate those underground gasoline storage tanks elsewhere on the site, um, as part of a redevelopment of this property. Another consideration is getting the, um, fuel tanker trucks in and out of the site. Um, where it's located now, they're able to come in across, uh, Tenth and ninety-nine E. Uh, you pretty much need a straight shot with minimal left, right turning, um, in order to get through the site. It is a relatively small site at approximately thirteen thousand five hundred square foot. And the applicant has proposed, um, as I stated, to build, uh, construct a new building, two fuel islands and a, and a canopy. Uh, dedicate approximately five foot of property along ninety-nine E, um, and construct the improvements that the McLaughlin Boulevard improvements that are being approved, city and, and ODOT. They're going to provide six parking stalls, bicycle parking on site. They currently have one access, one wide access to the site from Tenth and two accesses from ninety-nine E. The applicant has proposed to close down the accessways on ninety-nine E, the one nearest the Tenth intersection, and then to reduce the width of the actway from Tenth Street. The applicant is also opposed to incorporate several design features into the site to kind, to try and be more compatible with the historic downtown and the character that, that exists. They've offered to construct, um, curbing next to the sidewalk consisting of basalt similar to what you see on Seventh Street as well as a, a wall, um, near the corner of Tenth and ninety-nine E on both sides, along ninety-nine E and along Tenth, made of basalt as well. They've proposed a pedestrian scale advertisement, uh, mine sign out in front. Even though our code would allow them to go up to, um, twenty-five foot tall, they've proposed one that's approximately seven and a half foot tall. Um, all to try and implement the mixed use downtown code criteria of a pedestrian friendly environment where folks want to walk and access the site. The applicant has proposed a, um, seven foot wide sidewalk connecting Tenth Street to the main, main door of the building, uh, the new building. Um, as part of the application, they have also requested, um, three variances. One variance is to the point five, the minimum point five floor area ratio. What that means is that in the mixed use downtown zone, the building, square footage needs to equal one half or more of the available square footage of the lot. So in this case, the lot's approximately thirteen thousand five hundred, the building should have been approximately six thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot. They're proposing, um, a little over twenty-six hundred square foot, so they requested a variance there. Mixed use town, downtown zone also requires that a building be a minimum of, um, twenty-five foot tall. They've proposed a building that is teen foot tall. And then they have also requested variance to the interior parking lot landscaping. Um, and they've provided narrative in our staff report and in their application addressing some limitations of this site based on trying to accommodate the fuel stations, the existing, um, tanks in the ground, the canopy, the building being located on the site and the parking on site. They've also gone into great detail explaining one of the reasons for the variance for their interior lot landscaping as well as the FAR is that if they were to build a bigger building, which did include office or expanded convenience store area, it drives up the parking garment, they're at the minimum that we could allow right now. As you get more usable, leasable square footage, the parking demands increase on the site. So that's why, was one of their arguments for not, not adding additional leasable square footage in building is that they can't accommodate the parking on site as gas station, um, service station. One of the, the applicant also requested a water resource exemption, uh, from our overlay district. They are obviously, uh, near the Willamette River. Currently, there is zero, uh, landscaping on the site, impervious surface on the, uh, separated from the Willamette River by existing vegetated buffer as was ninety-nine E and then their site. Um, staff reviewed the application, um, it's pre-existing developed as a commercial use. Uh, they're not, they're actually adding landscaping to the site and they're also going to separate the, currently it's a combined sanitary sewer and stormwater, um, being discharged from the site. As part of this application, they're going to separate the stormwater from the sewer and then they'll also treat the stormwater coming off the site through some type of a, a manhole water quality, um, structure that will be built as part of this development, which will help with the water quality being released from the site eventually into the Willamette River. Um, so staff is recommending that that W, that a resource exemption be approved. Uh, walking through the variance, um, we not find that the requested variances have any impact on adjacent property owners. By approving variance, um, the applicant also proposed additional extra perimeter landscaping along Tenth Street and ninety-nine E. They proposed using, um, materials both on the structure itself and the garbage recycling area as well as the streetscape that exceed the design standards of the Oregon City Municipal Code in an effort to try and offset some of the, um, some of the variance, uh, some of the, um, variances that they're requesting in terms of, um, the height of the building, still trying to make it pedestrian friendly, offering, uh, a connection directly from Tenth to the building. I did, uh, we did identify, uh, seven or six, uh, conditions of approval. I've had discussion with the applicant and they are, um, they, they find the conditions reasonable and I'll let them, uh, their, their time uh, talk to that as well. But our goal would be to roll those conditions of approval into the narrative of development agreement so that we have one clean development agreement without a, without conditions, um, being referenced in the staff report. But I will walk through those conditions, I've already, uh, discussed. Number one, which talks about separating the storm and the sewer. The second condition is providing a lighting plan for the site that just demonstrates compliance with our minimum lighting standards, um, ensuring that we don't have, um, light on the site on the private property next to a half foot candle and to ensure that we have adequate lighting at the bicycle parking spaces on the site. Uh, that we did realize that in Tenth, um, coming off of Main Street, there is a one and a half inch galvanized water line that has had some leaking problems in the past. Uh, it serves this facility as well as the facility on the south side of Tenth, so there are two, two tax slots utilizing this half inch water line. Um, there's also a five inch water line in the alley on the north side of the service station. So the applicant's the option to upgrade the existing one and a half inch line in Tenth Street or utilize the water line, the alley to provide water service to their property. Uh, the applicant, it is, in the narrative, did address bicycle parking, providing equity stalls, indicated that all lighting standards would be met and that it would be located in a convenient, uh, location seen from the public driveway and would not be, uh, in the way of pedestrian access to the site. Um, they didn't make it onto the site plan, so one of the conditions is they just show us where it's at so we can verify, um, all the criteria of our bicycle parking standards are being met. Um, five and six, uh, condition five and six are, are very standard. One is just, uh, that all public improvements, whether it be the water line, sewer, storm, uh, roadway, sidewalks, trees comply with our engineering policy that currently exists as well as signing a non-remisterns agreement with the city, uh, for any future, um, grades that can be attributed to this site. As part of the development agreement, we tried to walk through the permitted uses and be as descriptive as we could as to what is being proposed by the applicant as well the benefit is to the city that they're receiving. If there are any concerns, and as I stated, we will update those permitted uses and incorporate these conditions of approval into this development agreement when it goes to the city commission, should you find that, um, no additional conditions are necessary and that the applicant, um, does sign off on the conditions as they are written today. We did work with the applicant, um, Nance Kraschar, our public works director, Christina Robertson Gardner from our historic, uh, one of our historic review planners, as well as ODOT, uh, on working on this application. We worked with ODOT for the design of, um, ninety-nine E and the McLaughlin Boulevard plan as well as limiting some of the, the accessways. Uh, we worked with Christina, the applicant worked with Christina on trying to come up with materials that are appropriate for a historic downtown in terms of not only the basalt, but the style of the, of the brick that's being used on the monument sign and on the building itself. Um, so we think that we've worked out, um, a, a pretty good, um, compromise, uh, with, with the developer uh, to try and maintain some of the characteristics that we're trying to build in Oregon City's downtown, accommodate their measure thirty-seven claim and some of the limitations on the site, um, in terms of location of existing facilities, um, and the ability to provide a, a, a building on there, um, based on the existing conditions of the site as well as the limitations and requirements of our code. Um, and I would also like to state on the, on the parking standards, in our mixed use downtown, we're, we're able to, we base our parking standard based on the leasable square footage of the building. Um, based on the square footage of the convenience store, I believe, uh, they were up to between twelve and fourteen parking stalls required. Because they're in the mixed use downtown zone, they're able to reduce that by fifty percent. So that's how we came up with the six or seven stalls of which, which they have met. So we are at the minimum end of, of our parking requirements. Also in the mixed use downtown, um, another consideration when we look at interior landscaping parking is that the park, the, the, the overall site landscaping in our site plan and design review requires fifteen percent of the site to be landscaped. The applicant proposing eight percent. But in the mixed use downtown zone, because we've realized that we want these higher FARs as well as more intense use, that criteria is not applicable, but we still require the interior landscaping to be met. So we, we exempted it for the total site, but we started on, on the interior landscaping. Um, the applicant's having trouble meeting, um, in this situation just because of the tightness of the site as well as providing extra landscaping along the perimeter along ninety-nine E and Tenth, which is where most of our best traffic will occur. If you have any other questions, be glad to go back and, and review the issues and try and answer the best I can.
Uh, Tony, you opened this with saying we're actually making a recommendation to the city.
Correct, correct.
So this is a little different than what we've done in the past.
Correct.
Okay, so maybe a little history, this, this is a measure thirty-seven, which I've never dealt with before, so, um, the city has approved that?
Correct.
Put it a waiver.
Correct.
On some, the history is.
Yes, um.
Yes, um, it's probably been about a year, um, that we, the applicant applied for a Measure Thirty-seven cl- a waiver of the use. So they requested that a service station be allowed on this site in the mixed-use downtown zone. Uh, that, that waiver for that use was granted.
Okay.
And...
So essentially, we're doing a recommendation to the city, uh, ba- on the variance in the, uh, site?
Correct, so even though we're doing a development agreement, uh, with the applicant, um, we still, the application still needs to comply with all the underlying land use regulations.
Okay, and so this is what's actually going to the, the city?
Right, it, it's, don't see this too often, but the stat that provides for a land use decision to be made as part of an agreement between, uh, municipality and, and a developer and this way can deal with some of the, for example, the Measure Thirty-seven aspect of it, as well as the city getting certain amenities it may not be able to get, um, through a straight, uh, approval, and also some certainty to the developer that they will have certain things in, in theirs as well. But when you make a land use decision through a development agreement, you must also show that it still complies with the city's code. You know, you, you can do some horse trading and, and some things within it, but you've still gotta meet that minimum code. And that's, that's what you're asked to be review. And, and the other portion of the development agreement is, any development agreement has to be approved by the city commission. The planning commission doesn't, doesn't have authority under the statute to do it, but staff thought it'd be best to bring it before the planning commission because you're familiar with the code and to provide a recommendation about, does this meet the city's code? Is this a good, is this a good deal essentially for the city? And I guess I just, one reason we did go the development route, the development agreement route is that, you know, we have, we're working on design standards for downtown. We don't have them in place yet, so we don't have code to require the type of development that we're getting here. Um, i- i- it exceeds the normal language of site plan design review. They could have come with a very modern building if they wanted to under our site plan design review because we don't have historic design guidelines in place for downtown when they submit their application. So that, that's where this development agreement idea started from. So you've got a very cooperative developer who's willing to be out in front and, and meet some of the design guidelines that he doesn't have to. And I guess I'd also like to back up and say, we have seventeen sixty-two is our site plan design review criteria. We have seventeen sixty-two oh-five-five, which is our commercial and institutional building design criteria. And they are very specific in terms of, um, amount of transparency, how many, how much windows need to be provided on, on facade, um, um, breaks in, in, um, repetition every feet. All those criteria have been met, as well as providing some historical, uh, character to the building in context to the building and the site. Um, so all the criteria of oh-five-five has been met, have been met through this application as well.
Okay, other question, uh, the water resource exemption, what are we actually exempting? Uh, I'm hearing we're doing some things and getting some improvement, but what are we actually exempting and not requiring them to do?
Okay, um, the water resource overlay district is a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot overlay that is on either side of any stream or wetland. Um, Willamette River, um, with its buffer, has, um, as an inadvisable fish-bearing stream, it has a minimum two-hundred-foot vegetated buffer. What that means is, in the ideal situation, we would have two-hundred feet of tree shrubs ground cover between the top of bank and to, to two-hundred foot. Obviously, okay, and we do have a, a process through the WR for exemptions. And we went out, visited the site, obviously no flooding, historic streams. Um, it's previously developed, so that's one of the keys to exempting it is that it's, they're not making the situation any worse, it's an already existing commercial development. Um, so we are recommending exemption from that overlay district.
I had a question regarding demolition. When you're, uh, demolishing a building, um, does that include everything that's associated with the, with the existing building, meaning the tanks? You mentioned the tanks were, were not gonna be moved, but at any time, are they checked for, to see that they're not leaking? Are they gonna be replaced with new product, new tanks, or they're, we're gonna use the old tanks where they are?
I'm gonna defer to the applicant, my understanding is that we're leaving the tanks in place and we're gonna use the existing ones?
Okay.
That they will not be mo- removed.
Okay, we can talk about that when they come, great. And I, I noticed on my document here, um, conditions of approval, there was no number five.
I, I will correct that.
But I do have a number seven.
Yes, I, I got a little quick with numbers.
Okay, so, so, um, okay, so, but you said public improvements will comply, and I guess that, that's all covered in seven, so?
Correct, uh, six, six and seven, six, six ensures that every, every public improvement is built to the city's standard, um, in terms of size, pipes, um, lines, testing, and whatnot.
Okay, great, I just wanna make sure that's clear.
And we'll, we'll correct that numbering throughout the staff report for the city commission.
All right, thank you. Any other questions of staff at this point? All right, well, we'll bring up the applicant if you'd like to make a presentation. And you'll start with name and city residence?
Good evening, members, staff members. My name is Bob Arsenjani, I'm the councilor, the property owner. My, uh, last name is Arsenjani, A-R-S-A-N-J-A-N-I. And my property address is one zero zero two McLaughlin Boulevard, Oregon City, nine seven zero four five. With me is property owner from Arsenjani Asian Real Estate Development LLC. We have reviewed the, uh, the staff report and also the recommendation provided by the staff. And we believe it's fair and we can, we conclude that it's, the conditions that our place are adequate and we concur with that recommendation. Uh, just one thing I do like to add in regards to the parking issue, that we have been seeking with the staff, is that we are meeting the minimum parking requirement. However, knowing this is a gas station and have, my client owns other service stations, most typical, uh, gas stations, when the patrons come to this, uh, C-store, they, they do while they're getting fuel. So oftentimes, the area under the canopy could consider as a parking space, but in this case, we are not factoring that in because we are meeting the minimum of six for this site. Uh, other than that, I have no, nothing else to add, I think, uh, I've only covered it pretty well, so.
Can, can you talk about the tanks?
Oh, yes, uh, something I'd like to speak about. That the, uh, the underground tanks are double-wall fiberglass tanks and they're in good condition. It's gonna remain, remain in place.
Okay.
As far as our demolition is concerned, all we do is removing the structure that exists on top of the, uh, it's, uh, existing C-store name, throughout space. That's the only space that's gonna be demolished. There is a requirement for us to touch the underground tank. All we have to do is reline the tank to the new, um, uh, new, uh, fuel pumps. And the requirement for that excavation is only, uh, one foot excavation, so it doesn't require us to go any further than one foot.
Okay.
We've been with DQ and they are well aware of our redevelopment's, uh, project and they have concurred that we're gonna co- combine with their requirement, making sure that once we do reline pumps, that do the, uh, testing, we have soil testing, soil sample, making sure that there are no problems. But the actual tanks will not be touched, will not be removed.
Okay, great. Um, you're going to remove the building, so the building, uh, I'm trying to remember if the building's, it, it has the overhead attachment and that's all gonna go and then you're building a new, a whole new building and a whole new island, correct?
Right, yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I think you might be able to see it on the photo, the, uh, the canopy, the existing canopy in the building are all in one piece that they've basically attached. That's gonna be completely removed.
Okay.
And we'll have a, we'll have a building, uh, of twenty-six hundred square feet, approximately twenty-six square feet, and a canopy that covers the island, which is separate, is separated, separate from the building.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question on, uh, travel. You're, you're closing down the south entrance in there from McLaughlin?
That's correct.
So is traffic going to actually come off of McLaughlin or are they gonna go around the block? Because it, they come off of McLaughlin, they're gonna have to make almost a U-turn to get in to your, the site. So I, I guess when, the question is, what's the traffic, how do you see the traffic flow there?
The way we have designed this right now is that the, uh, the axle Ninety-Nine will be, uh, part of the alley that exists between this property and the adjacent property would be used as part of the driveway. To be able to access from Ninety-Nine, so it's a fairly, it's thirty, others that...
Yeah, there was, it's quite a bit of distance between where the, uh, island was gonna be in the alley.
So as far as the...
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at track going through there, which it goes at a pretty good speed. Yes, someone's making a turn off of McLaughlin and they're making a, uh, basically a turn. They're gonna have to really slow down. Does that, does that make any sense?
You're crossing across traffic. Well, if you're, yeah, if you're coming southbound on, on Ninety-Nine?
No, northbound.
Yeah, nor- it's...
Northbound, normally, you know, it's been easy to get in there now, but now you have to go in, slow down and make a U-turn, you're coming from McLaughlin.
Uh...
Which is definitely a, a traffic problem.
Uh, if going, if you're traveling from, on McLaughlin going northbound, it won't be a U-turn. It would, you, you would pull into driveway and...
How many feet is it?
Yeah, I'm looking at your drawing here. Yeah, I don't know whether you have it up there or not. I guess that would be my concern of how, you know, so people can exit there without, uh, causing a, a traffic problem. You know, it's, it's had enough, you know, with the sou- southern entrance there and it just, and it may not be. You probably know more about it than...
I, I think that when we reviewed it with ODOT, um, the, we, we were okay with, with that being, coming northbound on Ninety-Nine E, taking the right off of Ninety-Nine E under the site by the alley. And then they did have enough, yeah, they did have enough room to maneuver. As part of the McLaughlin Boulevard Plan, eventually there will be a median strip to prohibit left turns from southbound Ninety-Nine E into the site, as well as for left. Oh, there, there will be a median in the middle, we're staying, you know, you're concerned with a U-turn. Um, but there did seem to be adequate space to be able to accommodate it. And certainly, ODOT is aware of the, the issues with this site, Ninety-Nine E and, and, um, I, I don't know what ODOT has...
We'll trust ODOT then.
Well, we, we looked at it, we looked at it as well, and, um, it is, it is kind of a constrained str- a constrained site. It's not ideal. Uh, we felt it was more important to get the entrance exit as far away from the Tenth Street intersection as we could.
That's a good idea.
Is the alley, uh, have curbing or is it pretty much open? There won't be a typical traditional alleyway that we remember as an alleyway, will it, it'll be open your side? No curbing or anything?
Uh, I don't believe...
Yes, that'd make, I think that would make it much easier access.
There, there will be some curbing. Once you get further on the site, there'll be a handicap parking stall. There'll be a landscaped island in front of that, in front of that handicap parking stall, which would separate the, from the parking lot. But between that ha- first handicap stall and the back of the sidewalk, that would all be a, a roller curb type situation.
Okay, great. And the, and the, my question, sorry, the other question I had was regarding traffic. Uh, again, leaving the site onto Nine, and we've done traffic study and it appears with ODOT's blessing that they're not gonna, we're not gonna be having problems with accessing from that, from that driveway out or the alleyway out.
That's correct.
And the, and the, and we've got plenty of clearance and...
We, we believe that by consolidating from two to, from two to one, as well as, um, moving it actually further north, um, make the situation better than the existing condition.
Yeah, that, the only, you know, I like the idea of having the median. I know we're gonna do that in McLaughlin, but it, it, somebody leaving that side and trying to cross over and get onto southbound lane, I, I can see that being a problem.
Right, yeah.
Full of gas. Okay, any other questions of the applicant?
I'm, I'm wondering, how many car can fuel, um, at a time?
Uh, eight.
Eight cars could fuel and then the seven blocks, so there could be fifteen cars on the property. How many cars could queue up? Say, you've got gas lines, how many cars could be queuing up off of, uh, McLaughlin to get into those eight stalls?
Are we getting fuel, is that your question? I'm asking...
Yeah, if you've got all the bays filled?
Sure.
And maybe, you know, you've got people waiting, how many people can wait before backing up traffic on McLaughlin?
I don't have that information for me, but maybe we can look at the, uh, do you have the site plan?
It's right here. Oh.
Uh, there we go.
I don't know if my voice will pick up or not, it's, uh, these, uh, huge pumps would be located where the schools are. So, my estimation would be that we're looking at approximately, if this is a scale, uh, I think it is this one in- inch a foot? One-twenty? So you, you would have, uh, essentially, but three car lengths or perhaps even more if the cars are parked right at the island where the, the first pump is.
Okay, thank you.
We did, we did have, uh, conversations with the applicant about how to address, do you count people at the pump as a parking space? And we felt that we wouldn't, um, that you needed to provide onsite parking for people coming to the site. Um, it's, it's a tough one. We haven't run into it before, um, our code is silent on, on, on gas pumps, what we do with them. Um, some people may get out, some might not, some use the stores, some may not. Um, but we knew if someone was driving there, you needed to provide at least the six spots onsite, um, if, for employees and whatnot, so, it, it, 'cause it does make a difference in the number.
Does the, um, does the development agreement, um, talk about doing any upgrades in that alleyway off of McLaughlin?
No, other, other than if they need to utilize water line.
Okay, any ideas on u- use of that water line versus the one on Tenth Street or?
That depends on our conversation with the civil engineer and we'll have that conversation with them to see which one would be most beneficial.
Thanks.
And cost effective.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate you coming up. Thank you. Well, we have no one else in the audience that looks like they would like to speak, so we can, um, we can close the hearing unless there's, well, there's no rebuttal, so I guess we can go ahead and close the public hearing. At times, we'll make sure and, um, bring it up here for discussion with the commission. Feel free to discuss.
I'll, I'll start it, uh, I get, this, I'm not real familiar with Measure Thirty-seven. This kind of bothers me because under any other circumstances in Measure Thirty-seven, there would be no approval of the variances. And so it's kinda like I, I use the idea of if horses could fly, you know, what kind of runway would you want? So we've got the condition now that we're, we're gonna have horse fly, so we're gonna take a look at the runway and I guess I would say the variances make no sense, except if you have that waiver, waiver Thirty-seven. So I guess I, I would turn it over to the city commission to make a decision about if they want to go ahead with the variances. As a, in, I guess in my position as a planning commissioner, I, I'm really concerned about, uh, approving things like this. Because, you know, height variance, the density and the landscaping, contrary to what we've agreed to in mobile use development. And the other thing, the long-term one, is what's gonna happen in twenty or thirty years when this area develops and we still have a, a site that essentially is non-conforming? Is that going to impact the value of the other piece? So it's kind of a mixed bag, I, you know, I, I think, uh, staff and the applicant did a great job working out compromise and getting it to work. It's just, from a planning commission point of view, I, it's just hard for me to say, yeah, that's a great, you know, goal. The, the Measure Thirty-seven, um, um, point, um, means that we have this gas station that gets to the gas station... The, the Measure Thirty-seven, um, uh, point means that we have this gas station that gets to the gas station until we run out of gas. Right? And, and I, I agree with you, I think that the city staff and the applicant did a good job coming up with the compromises. One question in my mind though, um, is what, what would the building's design look like? Um, had we had the historic design standards in place, would it have a roof? A, a roof, um, that, uh, that we might see on the houses, would that be more appropriate? But, but we don't know. I, I think that they've done a good job using the brick and putting the arches in place and doing the things I think that Christina, um, had recommended. But I, I agree, you know, circumstances are what they are.
Well, I, so I'll take the, well, I can't, I'm sitting here now, I can take off my commissioner hat, but, so we...
Please don't.
So we, yeah, really, so when we were talking about this plan and we talked about for three years, there was really no ever any intention of, of taking existing gas stations and buildings and pushing them, pushing them away. That was never the intent. What we looked at and, and was if we get new development that comes into this city, what, down there, down in that area, what's it going to look like? Do we need more gas stations? Do we need more factories? Do we, no, we don't. What we, what we wanted to do was to, to keep the folks that have already invested and spent their time and their money developing a, a business, keep them whole. So we didn't want to bring in forty-seven gas stations on ninety-nine. That's the intent in my remem- uh, my memory of why we said no gas stations in this comp plan. We did the same thing on Seventh Street with drive-ins. Didn't want, we didn't, we needed any more drive-ins. So, um, that kind of, in my memory of the intent of why we didn't have gas stations down in that area. So, with that, here we have a, an exist gas station that has served well and continues to serve well and needs to be upgraded. And, and I think that makes perfect sense. Historically, I, you know, if you go back to what gas stations once looked liked, uh, looked like back in the old days, you wouldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't build a bi- building like that anymore. Or if you go to the sixties, you, we've got one on the corner of Seventh and Washington you could look at. So I think what you've done and what staff's helped, I think it looked good, I think it looks like a nice application, I think that you've done a good job with that. I have seen some of the design standards that have passed for us and, and, quite frankly, for commercial buildings, this looks like a, a good application. And, and I think it would probably pass muster for the most part, but I'm not on HRE and I'm not at, I don't sit in that position. So, to your concern, yes, it does bother me a little bit that we have variances that we're passing, passing on like height. But on the other hand, I, I look at the opportunity you have to put a twelve sign up and you're not.
Right.
And I appreciate that very much, because that's a pedestrian monument, it's going to be a lot nicer and it's going to look a lot better in, in that area downtown. You had an opportunity to put in a nineteen-seventies gas station and you're not, and I really appreciate that extra effort. You had an opportunity to do a lot of things and you're not asking for a lot in return. And I think I can bypass trees in the middle of a gas station, makes, makes a lot of sense to me to, to avoid that. Uh, I think having the perimeter landscaping, um, I think that's going to be important. I mean, it's going to be important to you, it's going to be important to us, and I think it's going to look nice as we develop McLaughlin down the road. So with that, I'll say I think overall, I think it's a good, a good plan. And I think considering your limitations and I considering our limitations and considering the Measure Thirty-seven claim, I think it makes sense and it looks good to me. So, leave it up to you gentlemen to make a motion. Oh, actually, we don't need a motion, we, well, we will need a motion to move it forward, won't we?
I guess if I could just ask Commissioner Dunn's concern. Is that, um, we, we, you know, we went on and on with this as well at staff level. The Measure Thirty-seven claim was for the use. Uh, the design standards were in place after they purchased the property in terms of interior landscaping. So, but the mixed-use downtown design standard, they, they could come back and apply for a Measure Thirty-seven claim against the mixed-use downtown standards. So, the FAR and the height, because those were implemented in two thousand and four. So, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're, we're removing one process via the variance. Uh, we think that they're meeting, trying to meet through other improvements on the site. The interior landscaping one, that was in place before them, they would not be able to file Measure Thirty-seven to get around that requirement. So we're hoping that the variances at least met in, uh, on, on that one, that you can at least approve of on that one. So just, Measure Thirty-seven's, it, it's a different, uh, it's a different application, I think we're all still trying to get our head around it a little bit. Um, but for right now, they have a, a, a waiver of the use. Um, from SaaS vision, they could probably come in for the two variances, where the, that are required because of the new mixed-use downtown zone and file claims against those. The other criteria in the code were, were applicable, all of seventeen sixty-two oh five, which are the design standards, uh, which we believe they're being met, but there is some discretion, um, the building should be closer to the street. But we think the putting of pedestrian amenities to warrant moving it back, uh, if you don't agree, you know, that's, that's an area of concern. So, the, this, different sections of the code are, code are going to be applicable at different, different times unfortunately, the piecemeal way we adopt ordinances.
And, and you know, from the gas station on ninety-nine, I would be more concerned about having the building on the prop- uh, move forward on the property. But I, I, it, it doesn't make design sense. And I'm sure, uh, that, you know, looking at every which way, taking that piece of property and moving it around and trying to make it fit, I, I don't see a benefit to that. And I think it would be more of an eyesore than it would be a benefit. And then you, then you're talking about, uh, having a building that's actually blocking the, blocking view of the traffic. We have, then we're talking accidents and having problems, so. So, you know, I, I, I think overall, we're not asking for a lot here. I think overall, I think you've done a, an admirable job with the design. I think, I, I really appreciate you guys having a development agreement, I think that makes sense, it's the professional way to handle it. I think staff's done an excellent job on putting this together with the applicant, I think you guys deserve a lot of credit for what you've done. So, we're back to, oh. Comment? You ready to motion? Ready, go.
I'd move that, um, we accept the site plan, um, variance of water resource exemption. Um, it's recommended by staff with, um, with recommended, with recommended conditions of approval. With the corrected recommendation, recommendations for approval.
And I would note that what, what you're, through this motion, what you're recommending we do is provide a recommendation to the city commission to approve this development agreement.
Yes, sir.
That is correct.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion, hand a second. So at this time, um, Tony, could you read the rule?
Commissioner Dunn.
Aye.
Commissioner Stein.
Aye.
Commissioner Groh.
Aye.
Chairperson Paul.
Aye.
Shakeris four zero, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you gentlemen, good luck on your design.
I'd just, just like to remind everybody that if you would like come, the record's still open, it's in front of city commission on Wednesday, September twentieth. It will not be at city hall, it will be at the Clackamas County, uh, building on Kane Road at seven P.M.
All right, excellent, thank you, Tony. Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Any, anything from staff?
We have, um, we're moving forward with our concept planning. Uh, the Park Place concept plan has been underway. Their next meeting is Wednesday thirteenth, so two days from today at seven P.M. of Wilcom Elementary. Uh, Christina Robertson Gardner and Pete Walter are working on that one. And then, but we're also still working on the Beaver Creek Road concept plan. Next meeting for the Beaver Creek, uh, concept plan is, uh, Thursday, the fourteenth, so Thursday of this week. The technical committee meets at three-thirty and then the citizen committee meets at seven P.M. And both those meetings are held in room one-twenty-seven of the Bill Broad Community Center at Clackamas Community College. We also, we had an open house a couple of weeks ago for Beaver Creek. Excuse me. Well, our next, um, major public event is a design workshop. It's, uh, Saturday, October seventh, from AM to twelve-thirty P.M. at Oregon City High School on Beaver Creek Road. Um, as always, the public's invited to all of our, our technical citizen committees as well as our, our, our design workshops. And we hope everybody can come out. Uh, for our open house, we had approximately a hundred and thirty-five people sign in, um, so it was pretty well attended out there at the high school. Our next planning commission meeting is the twenty-fifth, so two weeks from tonight. And we do have a, uh, a sign variance on the agenda for that night.
So, Christina talked to you about her request to start talking about sign code again?
No, I haven't had the pleasure of that request.
At the last meeting, we had a discuss, or it was, was a meeting you were not attend, to, you did not attend, but we were talking about the sign down at the Oregon City, um, grow, uh, Oregon City Shopping Center.
Okay.
The Starbucks, um, sign and, uh, it came, once it came back to, we couldn't do some things because we have outdated sign code. And we all know that, uh, and my request was to bring that forward to you and see if we could get that on an agenda to at least start working on updating our sign code.
And I might jump in here, Commissioner, uh, Chairman Powell. Actually, I've had some discussions with the community development director about updating the sign code as well. And so I think it, there, there's, it, it's likely to come before you and then, I don't want to jump the gun, but there may be two phases and, and let me give you a little bit of background. Nationwide, there is a, uh, some very aggressive litigation going on about signs. Um, in particular in the southeast and in the Midwest, there's law firms and companies that are challenging city sign codes and trying to get, um, kind, overturn them on constitutional grounds and, and get a number of billboards in. And there are a couple of quick fixes that we should probably make immediately to make ourselves less vulnerable to challenge. And beyond that, you get into some really interesting, fun and difficult policy questions about how you want to regulate signs and also some other, uh, real limitations on things that you might want to do with signs. Signs are, you get in mental restrictions on speech, you get into, um, a whole host of issues that, that are, are, are fun. And, and so, you know, it, it will, it will be a process and it will also be, uh, some, some interesting issues involved in it. But you may see a small, short, let's fix a few holes and then come back and look at the real, really intricate questions, um, in a more, in a longer process.
And, and I think, I appreciate your comments, I think that's absolutely right. And I've heard about some of the litigation and, and I've been reading it up on it. But can, I think I have is with new development that we have, we are fortunate to have in this city. The, the, the positive commercial, you know, folks that have been coming in, um, no, it's unfair to them to, to them, what their ability is and not, not giving them some clear direction as to what we want to see. We have historic review, we have historic sign guidelines now, they don't address signs specifically. Which I asked that they did, but it, we didn't, we couldn't put it in there because we have an outdated sign code and we couldn't make that work. So, you know, there, there's, I have a lot of concerns about the signs, signage that we currently have, you know, and I, uh, we talked about this eight or ten years ago when, when I was on the city commission about signage. And, and we talked then about giving, giving a five-year or a, or six or seven-year notice to current owners so that, you know, they could, they could, they could start looking at what they're going to do with their signs. We are ten years later and we haven't done anything, and so I'm, I'm a little frustrated with that. But, you know, signage is an important aspect of every business and I respect every business owner's ability to have a sign. I just think there are a lot of different opportunities for us to make a, really enhance our, our community by making signs that are more, um, appealing, if you will, and less, um, le- shorter to the ground, uh, you know, um, same with, well, anyway, I won't go there, but, but I think it's important that we talk about it. So I appreciate that, I, and I, I just want to, I want to get the discussion going, I think it's time that we do that and sooner the better. So, thank you, it's been told.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? No? All right, well, thank you all very much, I appreciate it, we are adjourned.
All right, thank you.